Here we go. Oh, we get the sound effect thing again. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, November 18th, 2025 Pembroke School Committee meeting. Please note the meeting is being recorded. If you'd like to send us a question, please send it to scinfo@pembrokek12.org. The superintendent will be monitoring the blocks. If you'd all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Public comment, anyone here to speak, or we're okay there? Acknowledge your scheduled visitors. I don't see any adjustments to the agenda?
Nope.
None there. Communications, a recap of the MASC conference. Who's doing that, Katrina?
Yep, Katrina, me and Sue.
Oh, okay.
So Sue and I had the pleasure of going to the MASC conference last week and learned a lot and wanted to share a little bit about some of what I got away from the sessions. So here is a list of some of the sessions that I attended. I went to the delegate assembly, the Division III meeting. We looked at outlier behavior, so when you're an outlier on the school committee and how that can, you know, affect how you work within the school committee, both in a positive and a negative way sometimes, and how to support folks if they are the outlier sometimes. We also looked at school buildings, so I went to a session on that since, you know, in terms of our long-range plan, it's definitely something we'll eventually need to look at for our school buildings, so that was helpful. Went to the keynote dinner with the new DESI commissioner, talked, there was the general session on breaking the spell of high conflict, which was really interesting. I have some visuals to go along with that. Also went to a session on current issues and developments in education law, on some recent cases and how they affect schools. Went to a few different sessions on communication, one about getting the message right during a crisis, one about how to tell your district's story in terms of building confidence in schools, and then another session on communicating with care after incidents of harm or bias. And then the final session was one I actually presented with another school committee member in Duxbury and the educator-to-career data hub about using data to close the achievement gap. So basically, the delegate assembly and Division III meetings, the assembly itself was just to vote on some of the advocacy resolutions, all of those resolutions passed this year. The Division III meeting was a chance to meet with other people in the region, in surrounding towns, planning for the upcoming year and events. So there is going to be a February meeting for people in Division III on Zoom, and then there's going to be another in-person meeting, legislative update in the spring that they are planning to do. And this is a session on outlier behavior, so they really framed it as sometimes you might be the person on the school committee that's disagreeing, and that's not always a bad thing because disagreement is necessary to come to a better outcome, and it doesn't always equal dysfunction. It's more so if there's a toxic environment where people are deterred from, you know, dissenting. And so we talked a lot about ways that you can make people feel supported using operating protocols, handbooks, time limits for meetings, and having MASC trainings. And some of the possible next steps I identified, obviously, this is just an idea, not something that's predetermined, is to have the school committee do an annual self-evaluation and meeting protocol review, potentially around the same time that we also do the superintendent's evaluation. Another piece was having clear meeting norms that are outlined. Another school district had policy or procedure where they end all meetings at 9:00 PM, no matter what, to support better governance. This was a session on school building needs. They had folks from the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, talked about the pipeline for schools and projects, eligibility, feasibility, schematic design, construction, and talked about, you know, how spaces directly influence student learning and staff morale. And they talked a little bit about capital planning and transparent communication. This was a session that I presented on with the educator-to-career data hub and another school committee member in Duxbury, and we talked about some of the tools that are available for public use, whether you be a community member, a school committee member, teacher, even student, to take a look at data that there, that's in existence on student achievement, behavior, MCAS scores, dropout rates, attendance, all kinds of things, and, you know, being able to make different data visualizations to understand how our district compares to other schools, how we compare to ourselves over time. And two of the questions that I thought were really helpful to think about, if you look at any data, is what does the graph show and what's beneath the trend? We also had a keynote message from the new DESI commissioner, Pedro Martinez, not to be confused with the baseball player. And then he talked a lot about statewide updates, emphasis on inclusive learning communities, and I have some visuals of what he presented. This was the Massachusetts Vision of a Graduate, which talks about, you know, being contributors, thinkers, and leaders, so similar to some of the aspects of our vision of a graduate. And here were three strategic objectives and proposed priorities. So SO1 is strategic objective one, whole student. SO2 is learning experiences. SO3 is diverse and effective workforce. And so he identified, these are some of the proposed priorities that he included. So under the whole student, increasing student attendance and engagement. Under learning experiences, having evidence-based early literacy practices. Under future-focused, expanding college and career pathways. Under inclusive impact, strengthening evidence-based practices for students with disabilities and English language learners. And then for diverse and effective workforce, they had building a robust diverse teacher pipeline. And this session was a really interesting one, talked about high conflict and the difference between high conflict versus good conflict. High conflict escalates when underlying needs are not being met or there's something missing. The understory is kind of what's underneath the issue, and that can drive disagreements, and it's the root issue that's beneath the surface and not always initially noticed. And listening with curiosity can help break that cycle. And having positive, well, they had this idea of conflict entrepreneurs, you know, people that thrive on conflict and who might always show up when there's a conflict versus having a positive messenger. I thought that was an interesting way of looking at it, and, you know, even beyond just the scope of school districts or communities, but in different aspects. So that was helpful to think about. These are the four steps of good conflict she identified, identifying the high conflict and map it, investigate the understory, have the right fight versus fighting about something that doesn't matter, and normalize good conflict. This is another visual she presented, moving from high conflict to good conflict, so contempt to anger, closed to open, superiority to curiosity, disgust to sadness, simplicity to complexity, predictability to surprise, and then talks a little bit about some other things there. This was some, some things that could kind of serve as a fire accelerant in a, in a conflict, so humiliation, nobody wants to be humiliated, so that tends to make things worse. If there's corruption, obviously, nobody likes that. If you're talking about kind of binary group identities, you know, us versus them, also not great. Or if there's people who kind of exploit conflicts for their own ends, which is her definition of conflict entrepreneurs. All right. These are some cases of education law that was talked about. There was a case about the First Amendment and off-duty conduct of employees. There's two cases there. There was, which is Garcetti versus Sabellos and McCray versus Matos. The First Amendment and public comment was the next piece they talked about. So the Barrows versus Select Board of Nantucket, and Barron versus Kalenda, and Spalding versus the Town of Natick School Committee. And then the religious opt-outs and Mahmoud versus Taylor talked about thinking about it as an accommodation that we make for students and families, had action steps, including posting curriculum online and creating clear procedures, which our district is already doing that, so happy that we are in alignment there. Some of the communication takeaways, again, I did a session on proactive communication, just talked about different ways to communicate to the community about what's happening in the district, how to tell the story of what's going on, all the good work that is happening every day in our school buildings, to promote understanding of what is going towards people's taxpayer dollars, as well as, you know, building investment in our schools. One idea that I know at some point we had talked about was potentially having a printable that we send out, whether it's annually or something like that. Obviously, there's a cost to that, but I do think it would be a great way to showcase the great work that our district is doing and to connect more community members to what is happening in our schools. There was also a good session about crisis communication, so there was a lot of folks who were, there was a number of superintendents and people who had stories of, you know, crisis communication gone bad, like not having access to a system, you know, their first day on the job, happened two years in a row, and I was like, huh, thank God that's not us. So definitely using the sequence of alert, inform, reassure. And the, the big thing was just making sure there's a clear decision tree and a crisis team that has roles, and then also a person to back up if that person isn't there, and getting the information out there ASAP. And then this was a session on communicating after harm, so incidences of hate or discrimination, just kind of went over some of the things to think about. So you want to lead with care and not necessarily be silent because you're trying to figure out everything. Have some response ready so you can be able to investigate after that and be able to give more information. One of the interesting things that came from that session was unverified incidents of something like discrimination still creates real harm for communities, whether it happened or not. So as you're investigating, knowing that that is maybe making some people in the community feel uncomfortable is helpful to think about because even if it is something that ultimately doesn't end up, it didn't happen after investigation, in that interim time, people are still feeling the, the effects. So they gave kind of a tiered framework for how to address it, and I can share that after this, didn't want to go in too much detail here, but it actually breaks it up kind of like an inter, a tiered intervention, so like one, two, and three, and gives schools a framework to be able to plan their own way of addressing these kinds of incidents that supports the whole community. So that's it for me. Thanks.
Well, I went as well. But I think she covered like a lot of the classes. I'm just going to give you a couple of, like, I went to one that was on municipal boards that I thought was very interesting, and it was just like some really great ideas, how to reach out to the other boards in town to create, you know, goodwill and help them to understand what's going on with the schools and we can understand, you know, what's going on with them. For example, one idea that one community does is they have their National Honor Society go have breakfast with the Council on Aging.
Oh, nice.
And then another idea was to meet, to have regular, or like quarterly meetings with like the chairs of various boards to talk about capital planning for the town and take turns walking through each other's buildings and finding out what each other's needs are and things like that. So I thought that was a really good takeaway. And in that meeting, it was very interesting because there was a school committee member from Akushnet who was talking about how, you know, their tech high school, they're getting a new building, and their tax consequence for their average household is between $750 to $1,100. So I think that's an important call out for Pembroke to like take a look at the difference, like at least our cost is a little bit lower. It's kind of interesting that, so, and then, you know, I also want to call out Katrina Delaney, who did an amazing job leading a class to a full room of people on data, and I thought it was a great class, she did a great job, she articulated very well, and I would love to see that company that sponsored it, you know, come to our district to teach us how to use these tools in person, because I think that it would be great for the entire committee and any administration that might want a little refresher on how to use it. It's a great way to get, you probably already know how to get it, and I'm sure Erin does, but like the rest of us, just to be able to grab the data would be amazing, so just call that out.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I also want to mention to give Sue a shout out, it's a love fest, don't worry. Because we were having dinner at some point and we're talking with other folks about how like we come to the school committee with very different, you know, personal beliefs or ideologies, but it really makes honestly a better environment to be able to represent different aspects of our community and have disagreement and to model what, you know, respectful disagreement can look like in public. And I just wanted to give Sue a shout out because I feel like we were able to talk about that with some other folks who might not have been viewing it that way, so, yeah, it was great to be able to spend some time together.
Yeah, absolutely. Great conversations.
Yeah.
Ladies, thank both of you. Does your presentation by chance tape or?
If not, but I have slides I can share.
Yeah, I think it'd be great.
Definitely.
The rest of the committee would probably want to see them, so.
Definitely, and I have a folder I can share with everybody, too, that has, for the school committee members, all of the presentations from the app, because they used a conference app this year, so I can share them with you all.
They're getting so fancy.
I know, right?
Well, again, thank you both, ladies. That's a lot of work and a lot of effort, and on behalf of the citizens, thank you.
Can I ask a quick question before we move on from communications? Can we have a quick discussion under communications about how we're going to communicate with our student advisory council going forward, so we know who's in charge of what month and meeting with them?
Yeah, so the three of you can communicate on an email about scheduling.
Okay.
That is not a violation of the open meeting law, so I know there's a little bit of confusion on whether or not.
Yes, I follow the rules, I'm a rule follower.
Yes, but if you're only communicating about what room is it in, when are we meeting, whose turn is it this month, that can be, it's only if you're communicating about something that you would potentially be voting on or discussing an agenda topic, so.
Okay. All right. Well, then I will include everyone the next time then.
Sounds good, and I have the schedule mapped out. It's just a matter of, I wanted to have the same time for them, so like four on Tuesdays, and the room is the one next to the library, but I thought because you guys have, everybody has different schedules, you could pick the third or the fourth Tuesday of the month. But if you want to let me know what they are, I can fill it in, or you could just go month by month and figure it out.
I'm just kind of curious how everyone landed on four o'clock. I mean, I don't care, I can show up at four, but like, does that make it complicated for the kids that?
So with us, like, everyone has different stuff, and a lot of our clubs end at 3:30, so.
Okay.
Like, every single day, all of us had a club, so we just had to push it back. Like, this was the day that either some of us didn't have clubs, or like it was the earliest ending, so that was like the easiest for all.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense. I just wanted to find out. I mean, I don't mind four at all.
Okay.
So I think you all tentatively scheduled for next Tuesday, right?
Next Tuesday at four o'clock? How many people are, will be there?
Five.
Oh, five, okay. Let's make sure I brought a pizza, there's enough to go around.
Oh, he's going to be the favorite.
Pizza, oh, now you're on the hook.
Hey, I like to set the bar a little high for you guys, that's half the fun. All right, moving on, number seven, approval of bill schedule, they're not out yet, I believe, correct?
So I know there's a little bit of confusion of that last warrant that's kind of floating out there. You're not signing anything yet. You'll get an email tomorrow, and it'll say it's from Sharon Montaforey. That's when you're, that's the one you're signing.
Have they fixed the glitch, because I was getting like 3:00 AM?
You're still getting the reminder, but it should wear off by Thursday of this week.
Okay.
It'll expire.
My, my phone went off at 3:30 in the morning asking me to sign the warrant, so.
Let you know, there's still something to sign, yeah.
I happen to be awake, I've got to get a life here, it's kind of scary. Okay, consideration for approval, school committee meetings October 21st and November 6th, I think we're going to take them together. Do I have a motion?
Real quick, I have a couple minor amendments to the November 6th, so for approval of bill schedule, bills are.
That was the day we weren't sure.
Being circulated.
Bills were being circulated that day because it was paper.
They were signed in person, and then on page five, there's also, the librarian was, at PHS, was also unfrozen.
Got it. I had a quick, quick, I forgot all about it, but when we were voting on the resolutions, I think that one of them said that Katrina S. abstained, but I don't, I think you meant that we were supposed to abstain as a committee, like you were voting to say no, like along with the committee, like it says that you abstain, oh, is it fixed?
No, it says abstained, resolution number four?
Oh, yeah, four.
I think she abstained.
Yeah, there was some abstains.
Okay, I thought that you both either abstained or voted no.
That, I think you're right.
Like, I think that she heard you say abstain, no, and then she said abstain, and I just wanted to correct the record, that's all. It doesn't matter either way.
Trying to think of what I voted for that one.
I think you might be right, but I'm trying to pull back from two weeks ago, so.
So, yeah, so we were voting on whether we wanted school committee members and educators to sit on the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. We had a discussion about it, and then.
I mean, it doesn't change the outcome of the vote, so I don't have a problem.
It doesn't matter.
Even as is.
Okay.
Everybody's good with that?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
All right, so I will take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Katrina. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stained? Natalie, it's unanimous, in honor of my friend Patrick. Superintendent's evaluation.
So anybody that supplied materials ahead of Friday, they were included in your packet. Anybody that has supplied them since then, there's a copy, a printed copy in your packet, but you didn't get it electronically. As fun as this is for me, you all do need to make your comments in public so that they're reflected in the minutes of the meeting, so I don't necessarily think you need to go page by page and read everything, but if there's a couple of highlights that you all, or lowlights, let's be open to everything, that you'd like to just say so that it's on record, and then the paper documents will be part of, of the file that Natalie keeps, so.
Okay.
Don't all jump at once.
I think Sue's the first name coming up. It's the first one in the packet that I have, so.
All right, I can go first, I don't mind. So overall, I would have to say, Erin, that, well, first of all, I just want to say this, I did a couple extra years just because we haven't done this since 21, 22. Ooh, it's getting ducked.
So maybe just move around, I think.
So I wanted to point out that, you know, some of the accomplishments during that time period, so I did so. You know, you led the district through post-pandemic stabilization and fiscal realignment, facility improvements, and a renewed focus on community engagement because we had lost so much during the pandemic, so I wanted to call that out. What a fantastic job you did, consistently demonstrating student-centered focus and commitment to transparency, collaboration, and inclusion. I'll just go quickly through standard two. I want to call out the Hobmok air quality issue and how everything was handled. I feel like it was a standout example of responsiveness and professionalism, coordinating testing and remediation with state and local experts, and following through to a full resolution. You know, just the way that you handled the whole thing was exemplary, in my opinion. You formed a committee with staff to call out in any time anybody saw any sort of mold throughout the building, or what looked like mold, and didn't turn out, fortunately, in most cases. So you handled that with lots of skill. Under 2B, human resource management and development, you've maintained stability in district leadership and adjusted staffing thoughtfully, especially in response to enrollment and special education needs, and you've been very thoughtful about any additions to staff as well as any enrollment-driven reductions, which I appreciate. Scheduling in management systems, clear and consistent budget timelines paired with data-informed budget presentations have been critical to maintaining alignment between instruction and operations. Law and ethics and policies, your leadership during the South Shore Tech exploratory process and negotiating a protective agreement for Pembroke was thoughtful and forward-looking, and, you know, you, you thought of things that not everybody was thinking of, specifically making sure that we were protected legally with our regional agreement, especially if we weren't going to move forward with funding, so. And then I really appreciate your responsiveness to the community concerns around classroom neutrality. It was a very difficult topic for a lot of people, and you maintained a very professional, you know, profession, you, you were very professional through all of it. No matter what someone believed, you were able to speak with them with empathy, and I appreciated that. Fiscal systems, you've stabilized our budgets during the ESER phase out, advocated for equitable Chapter 7 funding. Most importantly, you consistently connect financial planning back to what's best for students, which is obvious, it's the most important. Year over year, no matter the budget, you find a way to make it all work with minimal programming deficits. Standard three, family and community. Standard three, uh, family and community engagement. You've brought families into the conversation through meaningful surveys, forums, and follow up. For example, your collaborative work with Papa and flexible scheduling solutions showed true willingness to listen. You created an informative, meaningful slideshow to educate families on air quality concerns. And you consistently reach out to the community to be the best, to be available for South Shore Tech forums and questions. I mean, multiple, so what more can I say about that? Sharing responsibility, uh, three B. You've expanded family involvement in many ways, ensuring curriculum nights, special education forums, round table discussions, air quality and South Shore Tech events. Families are more informed and more involved thanks to your leadership. And I actually feel like there's been a dramatic improvement over the last several years in how much you've communicated with the public and families and I would say that you've done an amazing job. Communication, you are clear, timely, and transparent in your communication. The way you handled the Hobmok situation through slide decks, public meetings and website updates and made families feel informed and respected was key. Family concerns, you model calm and respectful engagement, especially when issues are complex. Your response to community, community concerns has built trust. Community partnerships, you've brought town leadership, legislators, and families into important conversations about funding facilities, um, funding facilities, long-term planning. Your work on the Hobmok Playground Project is one of many examples. So your leadership overall has helped the district remain grounded and forward moving during challenging and transitional times. And thank you to our, your dedication to our students, staff, and community. And I look forward to what you're, we continue to build together. So, thank you so much.
Next up, I have Katrina Delaney.
Yeah. Awesome, all right. So, um, looking at environment, so I had you here as proficient. And so some of the things I looked at were creating a healthy and supportive school environment and aligning with the district mission of providing safe and inviting schools. One of the things I called out was the, um, when there were issues with entry and dismissal time at the high school, you proactively sought out solutions to make sure that, um, we found ways to improve that with getting a sign for the speed limit, with changing habits, with having administrators in the SRO outside. I think you were responsive to that situation. Also, I think just in general, you know, responding to the changing student needs post COVID, you've sought additional staffing and programs and grants and ways to prioritize students' physical, emotional, and social safety, a key district goal. You've also proactively thought about, just in discussion, um, potential grade band models, thinking about the future and how we can make sure our student experience or experiences are equitable. Similar to what Sue said, when air quality concerns arose, you acted swiftly by commissioning testing, establishing ongoing monitoring, making sure we had updates for HVAC systems and taking out old carpeting and things like that that were a source of some issues. And holding public information sessions to ensure transparency and trust. And in terms of human resources and management development, I had you at proficient. Your leadership reflects the skills and belief that every member of the school community should be valued and respected. You have the systems and hiring and retaining practices that help keep our great teachers and staff here. You also have made it available for teachers to have more choice with their professional development, which I think is something that they enjoy and helps with investment in different topics that they want professional development on. You also championed having, um, content area supervisors to strengthen academic outcomes for students while also creating more pathways for leadership for our teachers who might want to explore that. Let's see, also, yeah, I said that. In terms of the scheduling and management information systems, I had that as proficient. Our systems function efficiently and equitably under your direction, maximizing instructional time and promoting collaboration. I know common planning time is something that you're always bringing up when we're thinking about making decisions and how they affect not only the students' time, but also how the educators are able to collaborate, look at data, and adjust practice. For laws, ethics, and policies, I had you at exemplary. I think you model ethical and civil conduct that upholds the district's belief of, you know, making sure that, that we are both ethical and civil in our interactions. It reflects integrity, transparency, and fairness. Also, you make sure that the staff have the resources and understanding needed to comply with the state and federal requirements, as well as that the school committee understands what our legal compliance issues are and how to address them. And when we're not sure to an answer to a question or you want to get a second opinion, you always, you know, advise us, we can talk with legal counsel or bring them in to get an expert opinion. And also, when we realized that we needed, our, our district council was not meeting some of our needs, you actively sought out getting, uh, different representations so that we could make sure we were addressing the needs of the district responsibly. With fiscal systems, I had this at exemplary. You know, whenever I have a financial or a budget question, um, you always know the answer. You don't necessarily even have to check the spreadsheet, some of it you have right in your head. And I think it just speaks to how much, um, knowledge you have about making sure that we are both meeting student needs, but also being as, um, you know, cost effective as possible with the resources that we have. And I think it speaks to, um, rather, the fact that we haven't had a budget override since 2014 for more than a decade speaks to, um, your skill at effective resource management and aligning our expenditures with district priorities. In terms of, uh, data-driven communication, you always have data to back up your decisions and things for the school committee to think about when making decisions. And often, you're like 10 steps ahead, you'll offer, hey, like, we also need to think about this because, you know, that's something that will come down the line in six years. And as a new school committee member, that's not something that I would know right off the bat, but you always find a way to weave those things into conversation so that everybody on this committee can learn from your experience. So that's something I really value and not every school committee has that benefit. And you also provide historical budget data to help forecast future needs. Also want to name that Erin serves as superintendent and business manager, saving us over $100,000 a year annually every year that she's here, um, because she's serving multiple roles. And I think that's something that often goes unsaid and something that I am, it's very grateful for and the district should be as well. Moving on to the standard three engagement, had this as proficient. You know, making sure that we have community partnerships with our pathways program through local businesses and opportunities for volunteering, um, our unified sports program. I think there's lots of ways in which you've made connections with the community that are really valuable. We also have partnerships with the recreation department and making sure that we are developing our, our students into citizens of tomorrow. And then with sharing responsibility, I had this at proficient. You always make sure your practices promote collaboration between families and school and make sure that you're, you're, um, you have that shared responsibility. With communication, I had this at proficient, so you champion open and transparent communication in alignment with the district goals and strengthen community dialogue. I think, you know, you're able to provide, um, information through either your, your direct communication or your staff, um, different ways of communicating on social media, with newsletters, uh, and things like that. So there's lots of ways people can find out what's going on with the school district. Let's see. You also have, um, several dedicated online resources with various things, whether it be, um, teacher negotiations or air quality. We've had separate pages on the website when there are issues that the community wants to know more about. You've changed our website to be able to make it even more clear for people to get information. In terms of family concerns, uh, this was exemplary for me. I think one of the things I've noticed is that you are responding to issues with families in the exact same way. If I come to you with a concern, you're always, you know, mentioning, all right, have you done this? Has the parent done this? Has the parent done this? So it's not a different response, you're constantly making sure that we're following the same, the same protocol, regardless of the family or the issue, which I think is, um, just, it, it's the way it should be, but also not always in some districts the way it is. So I really appreciate that, um, that no matter the family, they're going to get the same response. And I think that builds trust and accountability and builds professionalism into the way that we interact with you as well. I think you handle issues proactively, um, with consistency and care. You always follow up with sensitive matters to make sure that the decisions being made are in the best interest of students. And I think that this approach has strengthened public confidence and exemplifies the district's belief that every member of the community should be valued and respected. Let's see, that's one closing statement. Uh, I would say Erin's commitment to students, staff, and families embodies the district's core beliefs and values. Her leadership continued to elevate Pembroke Public Schools as a district grounded in excellence, ethics, and collaboration, one that values every learner and strengthens the community as a whole. Thanks for everything you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Katrina. Allison, I have you, uh.
Yep.
The next.
So I won't go through the, all the same and say the same things because I think a lot of it is the same. It's Katrina and Sue. One thing that definitely stands out is Erin always shows up prepared, um, no matter when the meeting is, what, how much time she's had leading up to it, she always is prepared, she communicates clearly. She does everything with a real sense of responsibility to students, staff, and the wider community. She's always stays calm, focused, and committed to doing what's best for Pembroke students. When something, when there's issues, she's quick, she's quickly and thoughtful about it. When something affects the daily lives of our schools, she's already, generally, she's already working on it before most people even hear about it. She's even gone as far as taking some of the like classes to become like an mold air quality expert.
He will retire.
So I don't know how many more letters she might be able to add to her, end of her name, but she's, you know, I think that's, shows a real commitment to understanding what's happening. I can't think of many other people that would take their time to do that, so I appreciate that. You know, she's, I think I've said this, I didn't write this on paper, but I have many times said that she's like a fiscal budget ninja. And that continues, you know, like Katrina said, she is the superintendent and business manager. Her budgeting and planning allows us as a school committee to do what we're tasked with doing even ea, like even easier than I think it should be sometimes because of how much, um, information she's able to give us, um, which is great as a school committee member. I have spent, I don't know how many hours in meetings with her, both public and not public meetings. I think I'll have the pleasure of being in this room three times this week.
For multiple hours out of summer?
This is day one. You know, so seeing her on both sides of it, she is always, you know, she, she knows the community and the school district inside and out, she listens carefully, she's able to solve problems thoughtfully. She keeps her composure even in difficult moments. It always comes back to the same thing, helping students succeed, supporting the staff, the serum, safeguarding the long-term health of the district. She's dependable, a trusted leader who not only manages the present, but also is continuing to lay the foundation for a stronger future. I also have the two pages of the standards. One thing I just want to also share is, you know, she's for, when it comes to like communications, I think Katrina and Sue have hit on a lot of them, but you know, she makes herself available. Like she goes to like everything, like I don't know how she does it. She gives out, you know, her cell phone number, like she's not, um, if you want to find her, you can find her. Like she doesn't hide in her office, like she is everywhere all the time. So if you try to call her desk, she's not there. That's it.
Thank you.
Katrina.
So I have to ask, if I found a typo in mine, but it's not a substantive change, can I fix it and send it to you?
Yeah, you send it to Natalie, she's just keeping it for file.
Okay. So, uh, my time on the school committee has been short and sweet, so that my evaluation is the same.
I appreciate that you gave it a shot.
But it has been my experience that the, for the management and operations, the environment, human resources, scheduling and management, all to me were proficient, which I still think is a very high bar. Laws, ethics, and policy, I also found is proficient. The fiscal systems, I felt exceeds expectations and as others have said, you serve also as our business manager. And anytime I've had a budget related question, you've always answered it thoughtfully and accurately. And I think Katrina's, I think you just know it off the top of your head, it's extremely impressive. And then for family and community engagement, engagement proficient, sharing responsibilities proficient, communication, that's also another huge thing, is anytime I need to get ahold of you, you always respond right away and provide me with whatever I need to get back to someone in the community. And then for family concerns, again, proficient in my experience.
Well, that's going to leave me and I'm going to apologize because due to a change in work situation, my computer is now about 40 miles away. And I have two new computers and I'm still trying to master both of them. I'll just make some general comments, if I may, um, kind of using the standards that we talked about. The fact that Erin's been listed as a superintendent and a business manager, I'm not sure if people actually in the audience understand that that is literally two full-time jobs rolled into one person. So I always kind of look for the Wonder Woman cape at the end of the day. But that's a very impressive, um, situation for us to be in and it's also a great financial savings for the district. So fiscal advocacy, uh, I'm nine years on the committee and I don't ever recall us not having it on time, on budget, and I believe a surplus. I don't think we've ever run a negative that I recall. And again, you look at that, the situation, the current environment, absolutely amazing. Family, community engagement, I will jokingly say, Mary Beth, I see you and Erin everywhere, whether it's a unified sports, um, standing in the end zone of a football game. You know, you're in the community, you're the face of our schools, and I think that's absolutely amazing. I just think that's what makes us so special. I think, when I think of Erin, I look at amazing leadership. I think it's absolutely incredible, the stuff she's done, whether it's the mold issue or, um, some of the things we had to do with the freezes and things of that nature. To say you're a fiscal wizard, uh, the ninja, I love that. That's probably a better way to say that.
Don't jinx it, guys.
I honestly find you very compassionate, it's been my honor to get to know you over the last nine years. I am absolutely amazed at what you're able to do. I think honestly, this community, um, I don't think they realize what we have in you, your staff. I think we're very grateful and blessed to have you. I would, to say you're proficient is an understatement, um, I like to say you're exemplary. And I've always used the same expression, when most of the people in the room are playing checkers, Erin is playing chess. She's about three moves ahead of you.
Long game, David.
Yeah, as I said, uh, it's a marathon, not a sprint. But, um, so those would be my comments. Natalie, I will formalize them, I do apologize, um, but I can definitely fix that if that is okay. Any other comments or Erin would you like to?
A little, so a couple of things, what a tremendous missed opportunity for me to invite my husband and children to. Where are you and what are you doing?
Yeah, we're on tape.
I think my fiscal ninjaness is apparent here in these lights that shut off every four seconds. Pretty embarrassing, but it has been a privilege and an honor to work here for the last 15 years. I would be lying if I said it was easy. It has definitely had its challenges, but it is so rewarding. Mary Beth, Jess and I are fortunate to sit right here in the corner at North Pembroke and hear our preschool students every single day. Jess gets the bathroom side of it, I get the going out to play on the playground side of the screaming. So, um, it is the kids and our staff that make it worth it every single day. And there are definitely ups and downs in public education and whether we're in an up or a down, I think the staff and the students here are tremendous and have been tremendous for the past 15 years. So, thank you guys.
Well, I'm going to go one more and just throw a final comment. My father being a high school principal, when they did his eulogy, they said, my father had three loves. And they said it was Malden High School, my mother, and the kids. We just never knew which was first. So I think in the sense of you, Erin, I know you love your husband and children. I think you love the schools and I know you love the people and the children. We just don't know what the order is at times. So, thank you for the extra couple of minutes you put in every day, we really appreciate that. Actually, are we allowed now to move on to the superintendent's report? Actually, are we allowed now to move on to the superintendent's report?
Awesome.
How's that one?
Very short tonight. So in your packet, you have two surveys that we're seeking your approval on. So anytime we are going to survey the community and parents, we like to run the questions by you first, ask for your policy. So the first one is the Plymouth County Comfort Dogs Program Survey. So we are fortunate through our SRO, Mary Beth Simmons and Sasha, to be partnering with Bridgewater State University in their comfort dog program. As part of that partnership, they've asked us to collect some information from some of our stakeholders, including our students and parents. So you have in your package, it's kind of an outline of some of the things they'd like us to ask families so that they can provide feedback and make the program even better. So we all have met Sasha. Sasha has her own Instagram page. She's more popular than any of us here at the table. We are so fortunate to have an SRO that has a comfort dog, and I think kids unfortunately do like Sasha more than they like most of us most days, but it has been a great asset for us to have that. So anything we can do to help Bridgewater State solidify that program and help grow it, we'd love to do.
I will say this because I'm sure there's some people, SRO is school resource officer. So I'm sure some people are saying, "What is an SRO?" Is this something we need to vote on?
Yes, you have to approve anytime we're going to ask parents and the community questions.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So I know we're looking at two of these, and we just sent out another one. What's the timing of this, and is there too much, too many? Like, are we surveying people? Like, is there going to be an issue getting responses based on, or are we doing one last month for the strategic planning? I'm just wondering if that is something that we should consider.
I think this, the comfort dog surveys, they're looking for information rather quickly, right? It's within the next 30 days, they're hoping for us to do it.
I think with the coincidence of conferences, I think we could get a lot.
I'm just worried about too many, like, people just, oh, another survey, and just it not being a good representation.
Representation, yeah. I mean, I can't really speak to that. We tend to have the same pattern of people that do respond, but it, well, it will give us, is staff and student feedback as well, so that feedback is also critical to the continuation of the program.
Which will probably get the students being that, hopefully they'll do it during time.
I'm not sure how much the parents have.
We'll give time.
To do with the comfort dog thing. The mobile phones might be different.
Yeah.
And with this survey, is this going to be on paper, or is it also digital?
It's digital.
It's digital, okay.
Yeah.
And what we see, yourself?
We can share back a few.
It's going to all grades?
This is going to all parents and staff and age-appropriately students, so we'd probably do upper elementary, middle and high school.
I would say fifth plus.
Yeah, fifth through 12.
Because as we're considering these, I would prioritize the mobile phone survey personally over the comfort dog one, even though they're both important, but I feel like as a, for us as a school committee, I think the next one we're looking at, I don't know, again, it's, if we're sending out two within a couple weeks of each other, I just want to make sure that we're not oversaturating fast.
Is there a timeline for the mobile phone survey that we need to keep to?
Not necessarily, but I think that we're, we want to be ahead of any legislation that might come up.
So I would recommend that we send out probably the comfort dog later this week and the mobile phone survey before winter break, so that we're, there's a little bit of space there.
This also helps them continue the program at Bridgewater, I would imagine.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, so, yeah.
That would make sense.
I was going to say either that or you just do them both at the same time.
That's true.
Because then it's like.
They're very short.
Yeah, they're like, hey, can you fill out these two surveys real quick?
Right.
And if they're short, then they won't get exhausted doing it.
If we start to get data, I think we don't want to hold these groups up, but if we start getting data, if it's okay, if we start with the students and the staff, which we have built-in times for data collection there, then it would be, that would be palpable, at least we have a start on some of the data that we're looking at.
Yeah. I joke, I think my CVS surveys, I take longer than this, so I think online, we're not really challenging people too much, hopefully.
No, they try to keep them as simple as possible for all the reasons that you know. A lot, right?
All right, so let's take a motion, Plymouth County Comfort Dog Program Evaluation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Five, zero. Thank you, team.
The second survey in your packet is from our group of staff that selected looking at mobile phone usage as part of their professional development this year. So they're looking to gain some information from both students, other staff, and families in regards to what, what do you think people, kids are using phones for? Do you think it's a good thing? Do you think it's a bad thing? As, as Mary Beth alluded to, it's a very short nine-question survey, and it's literally marked the oval. There's no boxes for typing.
Open response.
Open responses, though I do enjoy the open responses. Very quick, just to give them, give them an idea of kind of where to target their, their professional development as they start to meet in the later winter and early spring months.
Yeah, it's really their hope to bring some kind of draft to Erin by the end of, the end of the PD window.
And how much would the, like, legislation coming through, like, because there's no mention of that?
Well, we don't know yet.
Well, that's, but that's what I'm saying, like, if we need to add something about, you know, the fact that this might, we might have no say in this, like, I kind of feel like we might.
I think in the intro would be a good idea.
Yeah, it needs to be something, even a link to.
The legislation.
Yeah, because I think it's gone through some, I haven't looked, like a month, but some of it, because I feel like that's important for people to realize, like.
We may not have a choice.
This is, this is nice and all, but it could come down to a very limited scope of what we're going to do.
Yeah, we can have that in the intro.
And it will be good to have the, the feedback, so we can use it to inform what we do have control over, but I think you're right.
Right.
Yeah, with that addition, I, I think this will be the data to have, because it'll let people, we'll find out what, what people know and don't know, and what, you know, because I think we know from what we've heard around town, but this will show that.
Any more discussion, ladies? We're good? Okay, Pembroke Public Schools Mobile Phone Policy Survey, I will take a motion.
Pause. Just wondering, for Joe, do you have any feedback on this? Just wanted to.
I think it's a great idea. I was looking through like the questions on here, and I was like, I could probably answer these right now, but like, I feel like it will be like beneficial, because like some classes, it's very varied at PHS, like some classes will use all the, our phones all the time for like classwork, like in AP Psychology, he'll put questions up on the board, and we'll submit our answers through our phones, and then some classes, like, we'll get a detention if we even see some on our desk. So it's very varied, so that can sometimes be confusing, but I think this will definitely help.
Having consistency?
Yeah.
Thanks, sorry to call you out.
No, thanks, Katrina. That, I probably should have done that myself.
That's a good call.
All right, so we're going to take a motion as amended?
Second.
So moved.
So I'm going to go second. I'll go to the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Five, zero. Thank you. Joe, thank you for that feedback. I should have done that, I apologize.
So next, in your packet, you have a series of updates from Policy Subcommittee. These are in preparation for our Cycle B DESE visit on December 1st. So as Jess has shared in the past, we'll have a representative from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education here onsite on December 1st, taking a look at some of our spaces, taking a look at some student files. They're here looking through the lens of civil rights, so that's special education, that's Title IX, that's everything. They are not auditing anything in relation to learning time or teacher evaluation, any of that. It's really just civil rights. We had an opportunity to submit documents for review prior to their visit onsite, and they were kind enough to supply us with some feedback on those documents and an opportunity to make necessary corrections before they arrive, so that they would not result in a finding if they're here. So there's a couple of different wordings to motions under Policy Subs. So the first one is consideration for, the first two are the same, so consideration for first read for policy ACB and ACBR. So ACB is equal access and annual evaluation of K-12 programming, and then the dash R is the procedures by which you do that. This is an interesting one to be bringing as a first read. When we did our policy review back two August ago, we did look at something similar to this in the Policy Subcommittee at the time, and I think there's still some sentiment that this is explication of the obvious. We do evaluate our programs annually, we do have criteria by which we do that, but the representative from DESI did say that it is imperative that we have a standalone policy that states that we do evaluate our programs every year and the criteria by which we use them. There is, there was no MASCE sample for this policy. I think what, what is happening is that there was a federal review of DESE, and this is one of the places where they got dinged, so they are then, you know, kicking it back to us local districts to make that change. I would not be surprised if the, the next MASCE policy circular includes a sample for this. At this time, there isn't a sample. So because this is brand-new and something that you all had a conversation about about a year and a half ago, about not doing, I think having it as a first read to give you guys some time to kind of think about it, and, you know, if there's any, Katrina, yourself in particular, any school committee members that you know in other districts that you want to run things by or whatever, but I would anticipate that we're, all of us that are in this grouping of Cycle B reviews are having the same conversation right now, so. There's nothing crazy in this, it's really just explication of the obvious.
Remind us, what's the timeframe that we have to take the second read?
Before the first? No, so it's not going, this is not going to be a second read by the time they get here, so we'll submit it as a draft policy.
Okay.
So you have the time.
Because then we might have time for MASCE to actually have, and then we can adjust as needed.
Correct. Yep. So it's a first read of policy ACB and ACB dash R, which are just the procedures.
Can we take it as one?
You can take it together, yeah.
Okay. I'll take a motion on consideration for first read, policy ACB and policy ACBR.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Five, zero. Natalie?
Next up in your packet is for consideration for first read and approval, JKKA dash R. So we do have a policy, JKKA, which is physical restraining and behavior support. R, as you know with our naming, is just the procedures. These are our current procedures for physical restraint and behavior support. Again, the representative from DESI suggested or, I don't know, suggested, strongly suggested that we include our procedures as part of our policy. So nothing in this is something that we're not doing, it would just be adding it to policy JKKA.
Discussion, folks, anyone?
Does any of this, by making it in the policy, change, change any of the, like, reporting of anything?
Nope.
Okay.
All right, hearing no more discussion, can I get a motion for consideration first read and approval of policy JKKA dash R, Physical Restraint and Behavior Support Procedures?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Five, zero. Natalie?
Next up is for consideration for approval of revisions to the District Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan. So we gave you a copy of the document with some red-lined revisions. The red-led revisions are statements that at some point over the past decade were in the policy. I think as it's gone through various iterations, whether it's a Google Doc or a PDF, some things have gotten lost and dropped off. But again, the feedback from DESE was very clear on what needed to be included. Please don't think that you're misremembering, this same document was reviewed when they were here the last time, and there was no issues with it at that time. So again, different set of eyes has, has found a few, few pieces that we were omitting, but again, not language that is new to us as a district, it's just found its way out of the policy.
I wonder if this has anything to do with AI.
I don't know.
Finding things like this.
As Erin said, a lot of it's coming down federally, so when DESI was audited, they were provided with some feedback. You'll see similar kind of things that were in special education regarding dispute resolution, so our safeguards were updated, just making sure parents are informed, so you'll notice that in the grievance procedures in the bullying plan, that's also included, so.
And even their policies on the website after the federal investigation into some things, like they updated a lot of their policies as well, because there were issues.
Any discussion, ladies? Okay. Hearing none, I'll take a motion, consideration for approval revision to District Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Five, nothing. Natalie, thank you.
The last piece underneath Policy Subcommittee is the three handbooks. So there's a couple of different edits in each of the handbook. There's some language that was in the middle school handbook, but wasn't in the high school handbook, and vice versa. There's also the definitions associated with the bullying and intervention plan are also for inclusion in all three handbooks. One of the other pieces that is in here, which is our practice, is, and is, which is part of the process when we do have a suspension in school, which talks about re-engagement and really suspension being the last option that we've looked at everything else. That is our current practice, but that language did not exist in all three handbooks, so it is in there now. One fun thing that we talked about a little bit at Policy Sub is that in the past, our handbooks have included language about outstanding disciplinary obligations rolling into the next year, and that is not something that is permissible. So if you owe detention on the last day of school, it does not follow you to the first day of the next school year, though we don't think we've had any, any real instances of that. But they did want to make it clear that that is not permissible, and so that we struck that language from each of the handbooks.
So includes like if they're suspended for like something?
Long-term suspensions are a little bit different, so under 37.
Depending on which, yeah.
The type of suspension, so.
Okay.
But if you owe detention for being tardy.
Yeah.
It's not going to go into the first week of school.
It is not going to go into the first week of school. For our students that are seniors and owe discipline, it does not follow them into their college years, but remember that there are events that happen that last week in high school that are privileges and not rights. So walking at graduation, attending the prom, all of those things are, are on the table, but the detentions and whatnot would disappear.
All right, any more discussion, ladies?
So this is approval as well?
This is approval, and before you ask the question, yes, Allison, once you do this, we will need everyone to re-sign off on the handbook again. We just finished collecting the handbook signatures for Pembroke High School just last week, so we'll begin that process of chasing it down again. There's, the, the changes to the handbooks are not substantive in the sense that if there was an issue or concern with a student in regards to discipline or attendance or grading, not having an updated sign-off would not prohibit us from instituting our, our district practices, so.
So where did this language come from? Because like, we don't have a headmaster. So like, I don't know, page 62 of the.
So some of the language was peeled right from the regulations, so.
We didn't change it from the regulations, yeah.
Okay.
Some of it not.
Right, so it's principal, headmaster, superintendent, or president.
I just don't, yeah, I was just wondering.
I had some similar kind of questions, and there were a few temper tantrums, and I got through it, and everybody put up with me.
There was no temper tantrums.
Extra long, but we got through it, and here we are, it's all coming.
I know you guys worked so hard to meet the deadline in getting these out.
This is the first thing, this is, Allison's gonna kill me because we worked so hard to get the handbook done before.
Thanks, Desi.
Yeah. So one of the questions that did come up at Policy Sub is what if we don't do it? Like, what if we don't do it before they visit? Um, and so then it would just be a finding, um, when they get here, so.
And can you remind us what that means?
Jess would be happy to remind you.
Sure. Um, so in a finding for this integrated monitoring process, we receive a, a rough draft where, um, we can make edits if there's, um, kind of outright mistakes, um, and then they issue a final draft. If there are citations in there of things, of findings, we then have to create an action plan, um, to meet those obligations. So if by chance we didn't approve one of these things and they cited us for not having a bullying plan that included such and such language, we would have to rectify that and show them proof of that. If you remember back in last January when I did a compliance review and I talked about, um, our ratings as far as meeting kind of requirements, these are things that if we didn't correct long-term, that we could be, um, cited or lose points in, in those kind of, um, overall ratings for our district, so.
So the fact that we have just approved the bullying prevention plan and we link that plan in here, why, insane that we realize that there's edits needed that we will do next summer, but we did update the one that doesn't require sign-offs, I just think that this is, it makes, again, it's another thing we're having to chase people down for.
Understood. Understood. I did ask, wait, I asked a lot of these questions of Julie Evans, is, um, is our representative from DESI, and I did ask that, is it okay to put them up as drafts and that they will go towards next year's revisions? And she said no, that she needed to see them corrected and posted, um, prior to her site visit on December 1st.
And linking the bullying and harassment plan isn't good enough?
No. Um, similar to some of the trainings we had to do for staff, mandated training, there were a couple areas that we needed to do additional, um, edits. Again, something that was fine three years ago, so it's, it's sometimes you hear feedback from one representative or DESI's looking, kind of zoning in on three or four things, whether it's coming down from federal, um, or not, that you may have been approved the last time around. Um, so we had to do some updated trainings with staff as well, and I had said, what about the link? It's, because it's there in our PowerPoints, um, that refers staff to whatever document, and she said, no, it has to be explicitly stated.
In the handbooks, not just the bullying intervention plan?
All of it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, interesting.
I don't like it.
We don't either. I mean, yeah.
No, I, I, I don't know.
We'll have an exit kind of interview.
Strongly don't like doing this.
I don't like it either, and I don't like the implication that we can't make our own policies.
And we did it, we changed it, we just approved it.
Yeah, like I, like we already made the policies.
The link's still live.
We should be in charge of our own policies, and it's like more mandated to put this stuff in, and that's the part that really bothers me, um, when we worked so hard to put, I mean, we, there was a lot of really deep conversations, we, Alice and I went through the entire, and the rest of you, went through the entire policy manual, so it's really tough when they force you to change things like that.
But we, I don't want to be...
I will provide that feedback nicely in our exit interview, but we don't like it.
We already have it in the, we already have it in the handbook.
I personally am kind of willing to go, I, I don't know, I, I get it, it's tough, but we just, like, I think having this one updated with the language and links still there.
Yeah, I'm not willing to have us be out of compliance to prove a point.
Yeah, I hear that for sure, because I don't...
But I do agree it's annoying, very annoying.
Because it makes, to me, this makes it look like we're unprepared, and yet you guys worked and then we forced it to make it come out before school started to get it, it was themed to sign up when kids were registered.
I think if we don't, if we don't do it though, then we look unprepared, because then it's in the findings that we don't have this thing, whereas this is the opportunity to fix it and have it not be part of our score. But I do know what you mean, it makes it look like we, but...
I'd like to do, I'd like to make a motion that we do a first read on this.
If you do a first read, it will be a citation on twelve one. Which is, is fine, we're just gonna have to write a corrective action plan, so. I don't want to make additional work for our district.
But I think it's more work making us get two thousand plus signatures.
I, I don't think we actually have to get the signatures though, to Erin's point, it's not substantive.
No, we just have to have it posted and ready and...
Okay.
I would also say, respectfully, Allison, you can vote against the motion, it could go four, one, three, two. I'm hoping it goes three, two, to eliminate some headaches, but if you feel strongly.
I mean, I, I don't want us to get docked for it, but it's stupid.
Yeah.
Literally, that's what I said.
I can see, I think, well, and I, I think since having sat on the Policy Sub for two years, I...
Yeah. And we had some like really meaningful conversations on the school committee last year when Patrick was here, about some of these issues and about linking it back and not making it so, uh, difficult, and I, I just think, um, this is, Desi, an overreach. It's, it's a true overreach.
Well, as I said, we go back and forth all night, but I think we should do, um, the vote, so it's a, I'm looking for a motion, consideration for approval, revisions to student handbooks, elementary, Pembroke Community Middle School and Pembroke High School. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five zero, Natalie.
Um, for Negotiations Subcommittee, we did meet last Monday with the Pembroke Teachers' Association in an effort to, um, bargain successor agreements for our four collective bargaining agreements. Um, that was meeting eighteen, I think, since January. Um, we are scheduled to meet again this Friday night, is what better time to have contract negotiations by Friday night. Um, I think there is a lot of energy on both sides, looking to bring this to a close prior to the end of the calendar year, so I am optimistic that, um, we will get in the room on Friday and hammer out the last couple things that are left with each of the units, and David's taking us all out afterwards, so.
I should have a hard stop at seven. I have a business dinner at eight.
We're all coming in this dinner, it's gonna be so great.
I think we had it scheduled to six, right?
Till six, right.
I think we already have our ending it.
If it's a semantics thing towards the end, we will, we'll figure it out, but. Vocational Planning Subcommittee met today. Um, today we talked about updating the FAQs, so we brainstormed some of the questions that we've all gotten since right before town meeting through, um, today, so we can update that document on the website. And we also talked about a calendar for education opportunities, um, in the new year, so in January, we're gonna target, um, meeting with the Council on Aging folks again, um, really piggybacking off some of the classes that they have at the, the community center so that we can have the greatest audience. Um, and then we talked about opportunities in each of the months leading up to town meeting, as well as making a presentation both at the mock town meeting that I think we're gonna have this year, as well as at town meeting, so. We have a good calendar going for that. Strategic Planning met last Wednesday and meets again tomorrow, so tomorrow is meeting three of six. We are moving quite quickly through the process. Um, last meeting, we broke up into subgroups by stakeholder group to look at some of the feedback, both in the survey, the focus groups, and any of the, um, data that we, for the district that we uploaded, whether it was achievement data, attendance data, all of that stuff, um, to really figure out what are the three to five big rocks, um, that really kept coming through, um, in the feedback. So tomorrow we'll come together again as a larger group, um, and identify those as well as hone in on our mission and vision conversation.
Okay. Comments, anyone?
Yep, just, I know it's been a lot of work between, um, negotiations and strategic planning, so I just wanted to thank Allison for all of your hard work, and this, Erin as well, and anyone else who's been in the process, but I know it's a lot of time to dedicate, so. I think when we set the calendar, we realized it synced up as the same week as negotiations every single week.
I think I've mentioned that a couple times.
So many meetings, so thank you for all the time you've been dedicating to that. I know it's, honestly.
We'll see, we'll see it through, it's, we're getting there.
So, just a reminder that we purposely use an accelerated schedule for the strategic plan because we want to have the document available as we're going through the budget process, so, um, having these meetings kind of come fast and, and furious gets us to completion at the end of January, beginning of February, which is right where we want to be, so.
Well, I want to make sure I publicly thank my colleagues for all their hard work. Future meeting dates and topics?
So on twelve two, I am going to give, it's twelve two, right? Yep, I'm going to give you the fiscal year twenty-seven Maintenance of Effort Budget. We had originally discussed potentially doing that tonight, but I do want to see negotiations through on Friday and hope that the fiscal year twenty-seven budget is built off of a tentative agreement with our unions, so that would be, um, a much better position to be in than building a budget off an assumption of an assumption. Um, in addition, we'll bring you your school improvement plans, um, for the twelve two meeting as well, and anything else you want to see.
Alright, so we're meeting on December second at?
Six.
Six. My calendar keeps correcting to eight, I don't know why. See if we can do that. Do we have another date in December, or?
The sixteenth, I think you guys took the first and third.
Yep. I don't think we want to.
It's not showing up, I don't know why.
And I think we did January as well, tentative.
Yeah, and I think we did a, we did the thirteenth.
Yep, second, third, no.
No, it's the, it's the second and third.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're doing, so, so one thirteen and one twenty.
Yep, okay. At six, yeah.
Alright, I have a new phone, guys, so you have to bear with me here, and of course, I'm technologically challenged. So we're saying, I'm sorry, January was what?
The thirteenth and the twentieth.
I have neither one, I have no way to lie.
And Joe, don't feel like you have to come, I know one of those is midterm weeks, so...
I mean, thank you.
Don't feel like you have to, you know, pick one or the other, like, school.
Or if you want a break from studying, feel free.
Yeah.
You always welcome to like give us comments too, like, if you need to.
And we could discuss, you can watch it later, like, if there's something you want to tell us in advance.
That's also my birthday, so, January thirteenth.
What?
Happy birthday!
You definitely should not be here.
Yeah, definitely don't come.
Hey, where's a better place to spend your birthday than the school committee?
A couple of us have done it.
I spend it every year with you guys. Just falls perfectly.
I don't know why, I'm sorry, my calendar just keeps like going crazy here. Alright, so we got, there we go. Okay, well, ladies and gentlemen, Happy Thanksgiving to all of you. We are going to go into an executive session pursuant to Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy related to collective bargaining as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the legal position of the school committee as declared by the Chair by roll call. Excuse me, I have to take a motion.
So moved.
Second, thank you. Katrina?
Uh, yes.
Okay, my other Katrina?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Ladies and gentlemen, again, thank you, Happy Thanksgiving to all of you, thank you.
To all of you.
Always good to see you.
Thank you.